So that's a little bit about me. My school, I serve at Garland Christian Adventist School, of course, in Garland, Texas. This is our 13th year. We're a small school this year. We have 16 students, so we usually hover around 16 to 20 students. And I'm proud of our little school. We have technology there. You name it, we've got it. We've got our Chromebooks and things of that nature, and we do robotics. So we're little, but we still, I feel, deliver a really good curriculum for the kids.
Amen. Amen. Thank you so much for your ministry there, too. And never underestimate the day of small things. Yesterday, I was worshiping with the Sagan Seventh-day Adventist Church, where 17 of us there, and they said, "We're small, but we're filled with the Holy Spirit."
Amen.
I like that.
And I know that I'm not the only one on this line that has been to one-room church schools. So that's, never underestimate what God is doing to shape characters and develop leaders in those situations. Okay, let's go next to Josh Ince. I don't know if I pronounced that right. I-N-C-E. Josh?
Yes, yes, you did. We remember you, Dan, from some time ago, Houston Centralite over here. So, yeah, I'm the school board chair at Houston Adventist Academy. I think something interesting is I used to actually attend the academy, much like Doug, when I was in seventh grade. It was Greater Houston Adventist Academy back in those days. So interesting about the school, we've got a great administration team, a really good relationship with the principal. And, you know, all the pastors of the managing churches are very involved. And we have a shared vision, and we work really hard for the kids at the school. So it's a little family over there. We're growing. We're at about 145-plus students. We're continuing to improve in the areas of technology, and we just keep on marching on in God's name.
Amen. Amen. Praise the Lord. And that school has been underwater more than once, but it comes out. It rises.
Yes, by God's grace, we're strong. We've been through it.
And we're thankful you didn't have to do it again here.
Yes, yes. Praise God.
Amen. All right, let's go next to Christie's, and her last name is iPad. No, Christie, tell us about yourself, and tell us where you're serving.
Hold on, I haven't hit all the right buttons there. My name is Christie Reeves. I am the school board chair at the school formerly known as San Marcos Adventist Junior Academy. We changed our name a couple of years ago to Advent Ridge Academy. There was just so much of a mouthful, and we had been looking to break up with it for a while. The spirit led, and it finally all just came together, because you know how hard change is. So we have currently about 36 students, I believe. We are down this year. Some of it is, we have some fear about the virus, but we've been hovering around 43 or so. So that's where we are outside of San Marcos, South Central Texas. Can't really think of too much interesting about me. I guess if I had to think too long on that, I'd probably tell you I was the first daughter of Keene, Texas. My father's mayor went through school system there in Keene, and he has been mayor on and off for a number of years. So that's me. That's where I am.
Amen. Awesome. Awesome. Thank you, Christie. Yeah, those roots trace back to Keene. All right. Next on the list is Lee Murray. Tell us about yourself and about the school, where you're served. Are we there, Lee?
He's talking, but he's muted. He's muted.
Oh, okay, okay.
Let's try this again.
There we go.
Yeah. So I grew up in Canada, but not in a Christian home. I remember singing in the choir when I was young, but I don't know why we stopped it, and I didn't know why until I was much older. When I was in my twenties, I had an experience that made it very clear to me that God is real, that Jesus is the Son, and whatever's wrong in my life, He could fix it. And now I'm 65 years old, and the last 40 years, He's proved over and over again that He's real and He's here to save us all. So I'm very, very fortunate and blessed, and right now, I'm working with a school in Lewisville. It used to be called the Lewisville Seventh-day Adventist School. We changed it in about four or five years ago to Knowledge Seekers Christian School. And we've had around 30 students the last couple of years, but when I first got involved, there was only six students in the school. So now we have two conference higher teachers and one local higher for the kindergarten, pre-kindergarten. But the school is, you know, real lifeblood to the church there, and just really proud to serve there.
Amen. Amen. Praise the Lord. What a wonderful testimony there, too. Next, I see Lindy Gonzalez.
Hi, I'm here. I'm trying to put my camera on, on the computer.
Usually, if you hover over the screen and look at the lower-left corner, you'll see a video, stop video, start video.
Yes, I'm clicking over that icon, and it's just not letting me.
Another option is to use the Alt key, with Alt-V as in video.
Alt-V.
And I just learned something new, too.
Today, I'm on my MacBook Air, and it's a little different. It's got an option, not an Alt. But anyway, usually, I'm on my phone, and I know how to do these things. Okay, well, we'll just move on. I am the chair at Fort Worth Adventist Junior Academy, and that school's been around since 1996. And a fun fact, the first principal is Roseanne Gonzalez, who would, in the future, become my mother-in-law. And so she, her and her family moved from, here, here I am.
Hey, welcome.
They moved from El Paso. We're invited by the Fort Worth First Congregation to come start the school, which was housed in the fellowship hall of the church at the time. And then they moved in faith to build a property just around the corner in a field, and then in time, sold a large plot of that land to the Walmart that now exists there, and the stores, and I think all of that helped to pay off the deed of the school. So the school has had an interesting history. Where COVID has kind of affected our enrollment this year. The goal is 77, and I think we're at 52, 53 or so. So, but things are going well. We have a very strong principal, Robin Grimsley, who came from, she was taught at Houston, at The Oaks, I think, was the school. And we're so grateful for her leadership, because it's a challenging time right now. And I work as a school social worker, so that's been the majority of my career. And I currently serve the pregnant and parenting student population for the west side of Fort Worth, for their school district. So I'm really passionate about education.
Amen. Amen. Beautiful, beautiful. A fun fact, that go with those fun facts, is that my two older sisters began their first grade at Fort Worth Junior Academy, that later became Burton, and then later, another Fort Worth Junior Academy sprang up. And we moved before I started first grade, but they went to first grade. And another related fun fact is four houses from mine in Burleson is my sister, my oldest sister's best friend in first grade from Fort Worth Junior Academy, and we happened to wind up four houses apart in the same neighborhood. So you never know, when you make those friends in school, where everything will be connected at some time or another. All right, thank you so much. All right, and now, look at that. I'm coming down the pike. Malcolm Cole. Malcolm, tell us about yourself and where you're serving.
Okay, my name is Malcolm Cole. I am a product of Adventist education from first grade through college. I am at the Dallas Christian Academy, at Dallas First Church. I have been involved with the school here for about 32 years in various roles. I've actually been the board chairman for a few years in the past. I just had the, I guess, a joyful experience that my daughter, who is an alumni of Dallas Christian Academy, and is, now just finished her medical degree. So she's a practicing physician and has moved back to Dallas to practice at UT, and she is a member of our board now. So kind of a, she started, I think, in pre-K at Dallas, what was called Dallas Junior Academy at the time. So we are, I think we finished the year last year at about 140 students. Right now, I think our registration sits at about 90, which we have a tendency, I know a lot of schools have a tendency, to pick up additional students around the first of September. So we're hoping that that number goes up, but we have quite a few students who are basically homeschooling this year because of fears of COVID. So we think as the year goes on, and some of these problems are resolved, that our number of students will continue to rise.
Amen. Amen. We're hearing a number of multi-generational stories here. That's interesting. That's great. And last but not least on my list is Marlene Spady.
Greetings to all of you. I was also the product of Adventist education. My father moved back to North Carolina. He was a general surgeon, because he wanted to minister in an area where there were no Adventists. So by the time I was in fourth grade, I mean, we'd been driving 45 minutes to a school, but by the time I was in fourth grade, my father had purchased the office that he had leased for a number of years, and he built an extra room on the office for our school. So I was in a one-room school. We offered all eight grades. Our teacher was working on her degree, and her husband was like a Bible worker. So he taught Bible and reading, and she taught at the back of the room, and he, she taught the rest of the subjects at the front of the room. I think in most years, there were only six grades. Typically, there were two grades that we didn't have in a year, but, so that was my education. Dan, I blame him for me being on the school, sitting in a school board chair. He told, I think he actually nominated me. He was one of the pastors I met from North Dallas Adventist Academy. And I told him, "I know nothing about this," and he said, "You just have to have a heart for the Lord, and you'll be a spiritual influence on the school." And I said, "Well, Lord, that would be great if you could use me in that way, because I know it would grow me." And so that's how I got here. North Dallas Adventist, I was a church member at Richardson, where it started back in '84, and have seen it grown, and there are people that are teachers. Stephen Gray is there from the time the school start, well, the second year the school started, and he's still one of our teachers there. My greatest joy is praying with my teachers and to see their heart for God. So when anything difficult comes up, which I'm sure nobody ever has any difficulties with other humans, but I know they each have a heart for the Lord. And, you know, sometimes I pray, "Dear Lord, could you just send somebody really godly to be here?" And then I thought, "No, because the last time you sent somebody really godly, we crucified him, and I don't want to be responsible for that." So I'm happy to work with other humans here, and happy that they are forgiving of me. But praise God for the ministry that we can participate in this, the great, the education of our children. Thank you.
Amen. Amen. Thank you. Thank you. And we're welcoming somebody brand-new, Trent Gale. We're, we welcome you to our group as well. Are you there? Able to sign in, Trent? We'll come back to Trent. Well, friends, I feel like I know you better. Some of you already knew before, but I feel like I know you better, and you know each other better. And that is an important factor on a school board. When you're leading a school board, if you have a little time for people to get to know each other better and connect with each other better on a personal level, the board meetings will go much better. Just keep that in mind. That's one of those extra tips. I'd like to have one gentleman and one lady have another prayer for us here, if you would. Anyone that's impressed, a prayer. Don't be shy.
Let's go ahead and bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for being able to gather together to discuss, Lord, education, dear Heavenly Father. We thank you for getting together these school board chairs in their different respective schools, Lord, and we just ask that this training, this discussion that's being set up here today will help us improve in our roles and serve you in a more powerful way at our schools, Lord, so that we can bring honor and glory to your name. Be with Dan as he guides us through this training, and let everything go to your honor and glory, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'll pray. Thank you, Heavenly Father. Thank you for, that you're willing to use us in the ministry of the education of your children. Father, I pray for outpouring of your Holy Spirit on each one of us here today and our schools, our faculty, staff, the school families, and our students. I pray that you build a hedge around us, as you did for Job, that Satan recognizes that these schools belong to you, and they are there for your honor and glory. And during the difficult time of COVID, guide us and protect us, and give us wisdom as we proceed. And Father, we're all ministering. There's not, all over the world, I pray for your blessing for your schools all over the world. And thank you for being with us today, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. All right. Trent Gale, are you able to hear us and speak? We welcome you. Okay, we'll move on, and maybe you're trying to find the unmute and the video and all the rest, but we'll welcome you whenever you get that connected and technology.
Okay, I found the unmute.
There we go. There we go. Hey, well, we welcome you. And what we've each done is, is we've, we've each shared just something about ourselves and something about where we are serving. So if you can just take just a moment or two to do that, then we'll at least get to know you, and then you'll get to know the others as we go along.
Sure. My name is Trent Gale. I'm the chairman of the board of Cypressville Adventist Elementary School in Jefferson, Texas. I am a nurse practitioner, so we have been quite busy lately with that, too. So trying to juggle both has been a little bit tough this year, but we're getting there, so.
Amen. Amen. We welcome you. Glad you're with us and found that unmute button. Okay, all right. As we go through, for the, I know we've had some joinings, so I wanted to just mention, originally, I think the announcement went out and said that we'd be having about three hours, but it'll probably be closer to half of that, about an hour and a half. And I want it to be practical in a lot of ways, and we'll probably cover some things that you wouldn't cover in a traditional seminar about, about chairing organizations, because this is different. We are a mission. This is God's mission. And there are seven key areas I want to go through on that. So I'll just share my screen to get us started, and we'll go back and forth with sharing the screen, but let's just see what we have here. Here we go. The keynote or PowerPoint here is available at interns.com, and also the school board manual that you've probably already got links to. And during this time, we want to focus on the most important things. There are lots of things we could talk about, but we want to focus on the most important things. And the first one I want to talk about is evaluate yourself, because we cannot really serve well unless we have some sense of what is happening in our own world. And in this area, we're going to look at these four areas: conversion, character, competence, and chemistry. Okay, let's talk about conversion first. Any ministry in our church, it's essential to have a conversion experience. Everybody has a different kind of conversion from everybody else. Ellen White says, "And steps to Christ." Some can pick a date and know when they had their conversion, but for others, it was, it's more of a growing experience. But really, what conversion is all about is knowing that we have fully surrendered to Jesus Christ, that we are sinners, that He is our Savior, that He has a plan for our life, and He will use us each day as we call on Him, and that we want to listen to Him. That's really what a conversion is all about, and we need a daily conversion. And there's nothing more tragic in God's work than having any leader in any position that doesn't have a conversion experience. It's awful. And so as leaders of school boards, you want to make sure that you're staying close to the Lord. Second is character. Character is something that has to be grown and developed under the guidance of the Holy Spirit. And with our character, some of the key things that come through with character is honesty. We need to be honest and transparent. We need to ask the Lord to help us when we have made a mistake to be able to humble ourselves and go back and make it right with a person or the group where we've made a mistake. And character is where we're learning to really apply ourselves to the most important things. So character is important as we are evaluating ourselves. And then competence, and this is, this is where we can get in the weeds if we're not careful. There are people who think competence is more important than conversion and character, and never is. The Holy Spirit can empower us and grow us if we have conversion and we're allowing Him to develop our character. He can give us more and more competencies as we go along. But without conversion and character, competence is just used in a selfish way or a ram-rodding way or a manipulative way, and that's not God's work. That's not how God's work is to be done. So if we have that conversion and character, we can learn the competence. We can learn and grow, and I've seen people become great leaders who were some of the most unlikely leaders. And then the fourth one is chemistry, and we're not talking about that high school class that was hard for some and easier for others. Chemistry is talking about interaction with people. And we all have different temperaments. Some of you are familiar with the, you know, there are a lot of ways that they've been categorized, but some are, you know, feel familiar with the four types of temperaments, where some are more sanguine, and they're outgoing and connecting with people. Some are more choleric, and they want to get it done and get it done. And some are more flagmatic and slower and easygoing, and some are more melancholy, and they're artistic, but they're up and down and all over the place. Well, whatever our temperament is, we can learn to have good chemistry with all other types of temperaments. That is a God-given gift that we can ask for, and we can learn how to work with people. What is, is a tragedy that doesn't have to happen is to think in a school board or a church board, "I don't like the, think, I don't like those people, and I don't like what they stand for, and so I've got to find a way to overcome them." We don't want that. We want to see everybody as a child of God, who is growing in their walk with God, who has something to contribute, who we may not understand where they're coming from, or why they're coming from, or why it's hard to get along with them, but we are, they are part of the picture, and we can learn together, and God can work with them and grow them as well. Sometimes people wind up on a school board that aren't converted, and our prayer is that they're converted soon, so the school board can function in more harmony and get along well. But evaluating yourself is the first step. Okay, let's hear any feedback, any stories, any questions on that, that little piece.
I'll jump in, Dan. I think it's, I think you hit some really key points there. I like the part when you talked about chemistry. You know, as school board chairs, we work pretty closely with our principals and the administration team, as well as just working with the people on the board. So, you know, that conversion aspect of it, that Christianity, it kind of is able to guide you through your interactions with people and to kind of help you, you know, lead with the right temperament. You know, as chair over at Houston Adventist Academy, as you well know, we've dealt with a lot of different issues, right, surrounding the flood and otherwise. And there's usually some pretty heavy emotions going on, on the board at any given time. And I find that, by God's grace, my role there sometimes is more of a spiritual focus, I guess you could say, to make sure that we are, you know, putting on our patience hat, and we're doing the best that we can in our interaction with each other, so, you know, God can work through us to get His will done for the school. So, you know, there's some unwritten things that a chair has to do in different circumstances when dealing with the board itself and constituency, where we're called to have that, you know, character that comes from that conversion that you were talking about. So it's a very useful thing, and we're not serving in a secular capacity here. So we have a responsibility, as we lead, to lead and guide in a Christian way. So we have to have that experience ourself, or else we can't share it with others.
Amen. 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 Any other comments, questions, thoughts?
So I have to confess, when you said, "We have to get along with people," a couple of people popped into my mind that I would like to ask to leave. Anyway, just being brutally honest there. But I know even when I used to teach the children's classes, and I would have an unruly child, I gradually learned to begin to pray for them and pray for the Holy Spirit to descend on them. And it seemed like that was such a help to me. So for those of us who do find ourselves impatient with our, some of our participants, I feel like, you know, God is calling, I try to see it as a call to pray for that person, and my heart, and my own heart, because it may be, it may be me that's off-center, anyway.
Amen. Somebody told me a long time ago, I said, "Why are, why are they there? Why, somebody said, "They're an EGR," and I said, "What's an EGR?" They said, "It's extra grace required." So God will often put an EGR on a school board, a church board, or on any type of group, and it's extra grace required. It doesn't mean that they run roughshod over the group. As chair, we can't allow that to happen. But it does mean that we don't just try to always marginalize them. We try to find a way where they can grow to their capacity, just like Jesus did with the 12 apostles. All right, any other comments before we go to the next part? I want people, I don't want people to have to talk, but I want you to feel free to share where you're at.
I enjoyed what you shared to kick things off, because one of the conflicts that we've seen in the past has been between the school board and the church board. And one of the reframes that's really been helpful is to recognize that we're not trying to compete with academic schools. We want to have a firm and solid academic offering, but first and foremost, we're a mission. And in that sense, we should be one with our school board. And it also applies to what you're talking about. The school board needs to be one in its devotion, as you were saying. The competency is very important, but if it's coming first, then it's no different than the public school or any other school. And if we're thinking about it as a mission, then everything that you said applies perfectly.
I've served, had the privilege of serving on five academy boards through my ministry years. And in one board, I arrived as a senior pastor, and the school was 25 steps from the church building. And it was, the church was the only constituent church of that school. And when, one of the first board meetings, the school board chair said, "We have three vacancies on our school board, and we need to fill them tonight." And I said, "Well, now, doesn't the constituent church make that decision?" And the chair looked at me and said, "We know who has the interest of the school, and so we decide. And if the church has a problem with it, they can tell us." And I, I learned over the next year how there were two worlds on the same campus, and that we had to try to find a way to work those things through, and it was, it was tough. It was extremely difficult. And it caused, it was a cause for a lot of prayer. And it caused, it was a cause for a lot of prayer and a lot of working and all the rest. And to make a long story short, uh, two years later, the associate pastor became the school principal. And the tide had finally begun turning. Uh, he had a background in education as well as pastoral ministry and, and that began to turn the tide and, and now they seem to function well as one. But it was, it was a painful experience, but it's one of those things you have to do. And it's harder to turn the, a large ship than a smaller ship. It takes a little longer. So we just have to ask God for wisdom.
Yes, Pastor, in that vein, I would like to, I mean, I would like to give God thanks because at Garland, the school board and the church board, we work hand in hand and, um, I, I don't have any issues like that. So praise God, uh, but of course we're smaller, uh, but, um, it's, it's really great support from our church, uh, leadership, so.
Amen. And that's really what God's intention is. And that, that probably segues good into the next, um, into the next, uh, point that we want to go through. And that is, okay, I'll see, see if I can share this one up here. The second thing is know your mission. Uh, we talked about evaluate yourself. Now know your mission. Now, there are a lot of schools that kind of work hard to figure out what their mission is. And there are a lot of Adventist churches that try to figure out what their mission is. But we don't have to work too hard on it because it's in the Bible. It's there. And so we can spend all the time in the world we want, but we can't get past the mandate of the Bible. And I found that most mission statements that didn't start in the Bible are a lot lower than what God has for that institution or organization. And so in reality, when we look at what Jesus said, he said, this gospel of the kingdom will be preached in all the world as a witness to all nations and then the end will come. And then he said, go make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, the Son, the Holy Ghost, teaching them to observe all things that I have commanded and lo, I am with you always. And then the three angels message there in Revelation 14 gives the final message. It'll go to every nation, tribe, language, and people group before Jesus comes and it will result in the world being polarized um, into those who will have patient endurance, keep the commandments of God and the faith of Jesus, and those who will go with a human system, whatever that system might be. And so the mission of our schools is no different than the mission of our churches. And that is, we are to take the Adventist message to all the world, if possible, in this generation. That's what, that's what we're about. And unfortunately, I can look back at my ministry and say, the first half of my ministry, I was on the 500-year plan to prepare for the return of Jesus. I was just kind of bumping along, doing a little bit here and there and trying to do my part and then hope the next person will do their part, the next person will do their part. But the closer we get to the second coming of Jesus, the more we need to step up our game. And it's not really our game, it's God's game. And we need to begin looking at what is, what really is our mission and how are we going about it? So the purpose of an Adventist school is not to provide employment for Adventist teachers. As wonderful as Adventist teachers are, that's not the purpose. And this is new to some, um, of our parents and the rest. But the purpose of Adventist schools is not to save our children. Because there are places where we can't have Adventist schools and we still want our children to be saved. The purpose of our Adventist schools is for the saving of the world. It's because the world needs to know Jesus loves them and he's coming again soon. And when we get that and that becomes more and more clear in our minds, what begins to happen is we don't just see these students as just little kids that we try to keep out of trouble and get them a good academic education and get them graduated so they can get a good career in life. We see them as little disciples of Jesus in training to be workers for him for the rest of their life. And the way that we, the way that we see kids, we think, what do we want our graduates to look like five years from now? Not in terms of academic and, and wisdom of the world, even though we want, we need to have a strong academic program. There's no reason to not. In fact, if we follow God's plan, they'll be 10 times wiser like Daniel and his friends. But we have a strong academic program. But what we really want is we want all of our graduates, if possible, walking with the Lord, serving the Lord, sharing the Lord, and inviting others to do the same. That's what we really want. And they're not going to somehow magically graduate if they haven't been trained to do that and then all of a sudden start doing that. It's got to be, it's one of those things where we want to be developing them at every stage of the way. And that means that our teachers are the key. Our brick and mortar are nice, but the teachers are the key. And we can pray for perfect teachers, but they're going to be normal. They're going to have their struggles, they're going to have their challenges. But we really want our teachers to have the best chance to have a vibrant relationship with Jesus, to learn how to be more open with their faith in every part of their life, to have a living connection with Jesus and to look for chances every day to share Jesus in not only in their words, but in their activities in and out of the classroom. So we want that for our teachers. And then we want a curriculum that is shaped in such a way that our students can see the teachers growing and they can get experiences in sharing their faith. Is that making some sense? Now that's a, that's a whole lot to digest. So now let me hear some feedback on knowing your mission.
Well, I liked, I liked a lot of what you, you said. I'm sorry, go ahead, Lisha.
Okay, thank you. Uh, from Garland, from the very onset that it was, uh, created or the idea was brought to the church to, uh, create the school, being an evangelistic tool was the main thrust. That was the main purpose. Uh, at that time, we had Pastor Kim as our leader in the church and, and that was the main thrust. Hey, we want to have a school here, not just for the education of our children, but we want it to be a, an evangelistic tool in the community. And I think, uh, with that being the foundation, it has really helped our school because we've never lost sight of that, uh, of that mission and that foundation that the school was, uh, created upon. So that's just our experience here at Garland, uh, just to share.
Praise the Lord. Josh, you were about to say something to you?
Want to jump ahead if somebody had something else? Yeah, no, I just like what you said about, uh, you know, building up the kids to be able to, or the children to be able to, uh, you know, work towards saving the world. I think where we, we were, uh, reworking our mission and vision at Houston Adventist Academy, but it was always leaning towards, um, you know, building these disciples for Christ, um, which is the end goal at the end of the day. So, um, really, really like what you had to say about that. I think that's a good guiding principle.
Dan, if I may, there is quite, there is quite a disconnect in those statements with what a lot of our parents perceive our schools are designed to do. And I've now, um, I guess it was in the late 90s I joined my first school board. It was in several states to the west. Well, it was in Hawaii. And what the overwhelming, most compelling thing there was, we knew we were mission because only one-third of our students were Adventists. And yet, the parents were always pursuing the top education. Now, it turns out in Hawaii, it's not difficult to be the top education facility when you're in a state that is 50th in education. And they, the students aren't there whenever the surf is up. So, um, even on the little island of Kauai where we were, we found that that was still an important element. And I came back and joined the CTA board and back in Keene, and all of a sudden there was this overwhelming emphasis, well, we've got to prepare our kids for college. And so it's all about achieving the best and the highest GPA and a lot of those sort of things. And as a parent at that point, um, yeah, I, I fell right into that. Now, I have grandchildren attending and I have a completely different perspective. And yet it's still now about making sure that they have met Jesus and learned to love him as their personal Savior. So although we say that the ultimate goal is to save the world, our education facilities have to help bring them to the foot of the cross, recognize who he is before you can ever go the next step. And I'm really proud to be associated with schools that, and, and I think our schools do that. I think they do it very well.
Amen. Yes. And, and it's true. We, we must have the academics because they got to get ready for college. We need to be, be there. But really, it has, it has to do with priorities. What is that highest priority? And, and what are we really driving toward? Are we providing students opportunities and experiences? We learn best by experiences. You know, the, the old, the old research done may not be exactly right percentages, but it says, we remember about 10% of what we read, 20% of what we hear, 30% of what we see, 50% of what we see and hear, 70% of what we say, and 90% of what we say and do. So if we want our kids to really have that relationship with Jesus that is transferable, they have got to be given opportunities every year multiple times to begin expressing where they're at in their relationship with God. Not in a pushed way or a manipulative way, but a way where they can learn to express it. And in large Adventist communities especially, that is not cool among the students. You know, and so it's a, it's a big challenge. But the teachers, that's why the teacher's role has to be extremely crucial. In some of our, our schools too, and you know this very well, some of the parents failed at raising their kids spiritually. So they send them to the church school expecting the church school to do what they did not do. And that makes it a challenge. But that also means that recognizing that means that instead of just say, well, it's your fault, not ours. No, it's your fault, not ours. We, we say, we are here to help families of our students, not just the students. Because if, if the student's going to succeed, we're going to help families. And showing families how to have interesting family worship, which the Value Genesis 1 study shows is the single most important factor in helping kids grow up loving Jesus and loving the church. Interesting family worship. Schools can help let students practice that in the classroom. And they can learn to lead the classroom worship. And then they can take it back home and either enhance what's there or, um, start what isn't there. So these are some things that we, God can help us if we have the big vision and call of the Bible. And we, we keep that and keep moving in that direction, one way or another. Other comments or thoughts on this?
Well, I have a question for Marlene. And I have it for her because I'm just more familiar with NDAA than any of the other schools. Uh, so Marlene, how do you balance, uh, so I have some, my son graduated from NDAA as well as I have some friends whose kids go there now. How do you balance, uh, the program? Like, there's a lot of academics there and then there's a lot of extracurricular activities. So like some of the kids, they don't sleep until like 2:00 AM in the morning because they've got band, they've got their schoolwork, they've got all that. How do we strike a balance, uh, with that? I mean, I know it's a big question. I'm sorry.
Who do you think is responsible?
No.
So I go back to, who do you think is responsible to help their children create a balance?
Well, the, the parents, but I mean.
So with my kids, they got to choose what now, okay, and I have to exempt myself. I homeschool my kids. They did athletics with, they did Pathfinders at Lewisville. Because we live out in South Lake. And we did athletics with, uh, NDAA. But they were, we, I only allowed them to do one, uh, athletic sport because the, of what I provided here at home. And, and the importance of that. So yes, is it a conscious thing? In my mind and in the mind of the faculty and staff, I think it is. I think sometimes at schools, we do want to be academically strong. We do want to be um, extracurricular, uh, have the robotics and that's, you know, it seems like a, a strong appeal to a lot of people. And, um, if, if we have basketball and robotics, we need to have drama. We need to have music. We have, and I, I think it, it, to offer those things is, is not wrong, but I, yeah, I, I think it, it, you have to find a balance there. And I know some parents do. And kids can be pretty, pretty adamant about what they're going to do. So, yeah, and I, 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 I don't have direct control of what goes on in the classroom, but I feel like in the classroom, um, if, if students are diligent and using their time wisely, the homework doesn't stack up, so it's always after school. So, but I know you're talking about more from a school board point of view, and I'm talking about it as a parenting point of view. But yes, I, I think it's difficult and I think sometimes, um, the more things that you are able to offer, it may appear that the, the grounding that we're, we're reviewing here today, that we're discipling to graduate disciples, not these academically, uh, kids who are academically excelling. And, um, I think that's icing on the cake. I think when we're providing the spiritual environment, I think the academic excellence becomes as a result of the spirituality that, that we provide. And yes, I pray that that grows stronger in our hearts. But once again, I, I, I think as church families and to hold each other up, there's a lot of choices we have to make as, uh, as parents. Yeah, it's not, it's not easy. And but there, and I think, uh, I don't know, I, I think there's, there's a, a broad base of responsibility and it can't be just all with, within that school. And yeah, not everybody has, I, I think this matches my motivation is, is that the, they be, that we bind their hearts to God, we bind their hearts to, um, spiritually, people who are spiritually bound to Christ too. Um, we don't have total control over that. And yeah, I, I'm sorry for the two o'clock bedtimes.
So I'm wondering from a board perspective though, is that something where we maybe should put in policies that, okay, let's say your child is in the orchestra? Or is there something from the board level where we say, okay, we, we limit or the policy, the suggested policy is that we limit your child's extracurricular activities to just two activities or something like that? So from a list perspective, is there anything that we should consider, I guess?
You know, Lisha?
Yes, sir.
There may be boards that want to look at that or to evaluate that, but I think, um, I think we live in a society where being busy is almost worshipped sometimes. And one of the benefits of COVID is it's taught us that you can get a lot done without being busy all the time. And it forced us to be around our families more. So I think it's, it really starts more with us personally in trying to recognize busy as an acronym for being under Satan's yoke.
Great, yeah, that's good.
More important, um, you know, like if you're going to nail in a nail, it's more important to not be just going boom, 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 boom. But to get some well-driven nails, to really have some things that really make a difference. And I think that it, it is wise as a school to emphasize whatever it takes, that we need to be balanced. And I, and I, I, I know this is easy to say on a Zoom conference and harder for our principals and head teachers to implement. But in reality, if a teacher's schedule is out of balance, that sends the wrong message to students. And so if there are teachers who are working and doing all kinds of homework and they're working late, late, late to the night at the school, there, something probably ought to change. Because they're, they're shortchanging family and other. Because they're, they're shortchanging family and other things. Finding ways to do that is not the easy thing, and that's a whole nother seminar that takes 20 hours.
I have one observation. I think this becomes, the larger the school, the more extracurricular the parents and the kids want. And it does become a, it can become a rat race because you're capable of offering more things. I, I think that's one of the things I loved about my little school. We were there for the duration of the school time. We were country families. There was no demand for all this and we were home and family bound. And, and I had a strong spiritual family life. But it, it, so it becomes difficult, but I don't see as my job, I don't think the board stands in a position to make policies that govern the school. I think that the, the school board works with the school and its leadership. And while things may not always fit my framework, that's when I go to my knees and start praying over this and, and ask God to impress the hearts of others. And sometimes it doesn't turn out, it doesn't get fixed the way I think it should. But I don't have, I don't think a board sits in governance of the school. We stand as disciples alongside them.
Well, this is a good discussion that can continue offline. But I am going to go ahead and bring it back to the next point. And that is number three, love your network. As a school board chair, you have a network that you must be sure you're having good relationships with. I mean, you want to have good relationships with everybody. But you must have the best possible relationships with the pastor or pastors in your network, with the conference education leader or leaders, and with the principal and head teacher. You see, that's kind of your network that you have to be sure that you have good relationships with. If those break down, you want to pray well yourself and you want to go take somebody out to eat or sit down with them and pray together and find out what, listen well to each other. Because if any of these, if any of these break down, it's like the four legs on a stool or on a table, you're going to have a wobbly table that sooner or later going to fall down. And you can go through all kinds of techniques and dynamics and strategies and all the rest. But if these relationships aren't as strong as possible, it's going to fail. When they are strong, on the other hand, you can gradually begin to shape more and more a collective vision and mission going to the mission of what God's called all of us too. So love your networks. Sometimes you have to love the unlovable. Sometimes it's painful. And I think sometimes as a pastor, I was painful to some of the people in the school or the church or whatever. And I repent. I am sorry because the Lord allowed other people who were like me to come into my life to see what I was like, so I could repent of what I had done for other people. Because we're all growing together, but we've got to find a way to, to, and you want to make sure you love your network. What observations, comments, stories do you have from this? Just one at a time, please.
I'll kick it off again. You told me we wanted to stop, Dan. No, I mean, I, I think that, that's a key part. I jotted down some notes. I know that's an area I'd like to be able to improve. And you know, we have a lot of managing churches here at Houston Adventist Academy. And you know, some of the pastors I know personally just from moving around in Houston and others I don't. And you know, being able to make those connections with the pastors, find out what's going on in their church. We did an exercise recently where we made sure that the pastors knew, as crazy as it may sound, which children were a part of our school that attended their church so that we could, you know, you know, connect better with those families, make sure that we were, you know, connecting with registration questions and the like. So I think I would like to definitely take an additional step with some pastors that are, are part of our board here recently to, you know, like you said, go out to lunch, talk about their, their churches and, 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 you know, their interaction points with the, with the board. I think that would go a long way in strengthening the board. So I appreciate that point.
I agree. I think that it, it becomes, it changes your view of who that pastor is sitting on your board when you know where he is in life, what he's going through, et cetera. And something that may have seemed like he was combative toward you or resistant or something can definitely put barky down. I, I, I experienced it when I was a nurse practicing nursing. And there was a girl on my, I, I was the new kid on the, on the unit. And I thought she didn't like me. And we were at a, at some sort of shower for one of the other staff and we were working in the kitchen together and we talked a bit and she said, you're really nice. She said, I thought you were stuck up and didn't like me. And I went, oh my goodness. I like you. I, I thought you didn't like me. And, and she goes, no. And, and we just laughed and shared a great camaraderie from there forward. Just, I don't know if it was a look or what, but yeah, reach out.
Build those relationships. We have to invest some time. And I know that your, your role as church, as school board chair is volunteer. And you have your other job and you have your family and there are limitations on time. But, but.
You mean, you guys aren't getting paid for this? Sorry.
It's funny.
Share the wealth, Marlene, share the wealth. But, but you know, this is, there, there, you'll find avenues. In fact, sometimes you'll be able to bring people together that have been around each other for years and have never really been brought together. And you can, where it may not just be one-on-one, but you may have two or three people together and at a meal or whatever. And, and all of a sudden, the dynamic begins changing. So, all right, well, let's move on to the next one here. Number four is, build your team. See your school board members as a team. Now, as you've noticed, we have been dealing a lot with relationships rather than techniques. Okay? Because relationships have everything to do with the effectiveness of any ministry or mission. Build your teams, your team. And your team is really your board members. And that will include the head teacher or principal. That will usually include the pastors in your area. And that'll usually often include a representative from this school, from the conference. So your network we're just talking about, that's the tight team. But then you have the larger team of board members. And to build your team, what I, what I found tragically in my ministry is that you can have people who've gone to church together for 40 years and they've never heard each other's conversion story or testimony. They don't know what pain somebody's going through or what excitement they want to share. It's just kind of, we get together and we go through the agenda. And so to build a team, you've got to do more than agenda. You've got to have some opportunity for interaction. And that's one reason why in starting out here, I could have just started out by presenting and it probably would have gone the wrong way. But when I heard from each of you and you heard from each other a little bit about yourself and where you're serving and what it's like, all of us feel like we know each other a little better. And I think it's time well spent to take even five minutes at a board meeting to have a sharing time, knowing that somebody's going to try to dominate it. And you're going to have to ask them to be a little bit shorter. And somebody will never speak. And so you'll have to try to invite them to speak up or ask them. Or you can have them subdivide, not just in the subcommittees of finance and personnel or those standard academics, the standard subcommittees. But you could even say, you know, tonight, we, I, I want to just have a little time here and I want you to turn to somebody beside you and tell them one of your favorite Bible verses and why. You, you see how that could work in five minutes? Nobody's dominating and everybody's having a participation role. Another question is, would be, how did you first, how did the Adventist message first come into your family? I mean, this is an Adventist school board. And so you'll find out for some, it's the first time. For others, it was a generation ago. For others, it was many generations ago. But you can do it in small groups and then a larger group. But you can find a way to build your team even in little, little segments of your school board. And that's really, as the chair, you have that opportunity to introduce something like that. People say, well, we never did anything like that before. You just say, do you like it? Well, yeah. Okay. Well, then we might do more of it. Or if they say, I don't like how you do that, you say, well, then we won't do it for once a month. So you, however you want to do it. But you're trying to build your team, connect the people with each other. So they're looking out for each other. Now, here's another thing that makes a huge difference. And I don't know why I didn't get this until 20 years into ministry. The week leading up to a board meeting, if you will pray briefly by name for everybody on the board, the board meeting will tend to go much better. Now, you might have 20 people on the board. I don't know how many. Some boards are as large as 40, some may be as small as five or 10. But if you, and I'm not, I mean, this can be in devoted prayer time when you're with the Lord and you usually are praying. But this can also just be when you're driving somewhere and you just go down and begin praying for the board members by name. And you say, Lord bless this person today. I don't know them as well as I'd like to. You know what their needs are, you know what their joys are. But may they have a wonderful day and protect them from the evil one and may they be a blessing to other people. And in time, you'll start praying, praying for their spouses and their children, maybe their grandchildren. You will begin to realize that you know more and more of their family. And when the board gathers together to go through the business at hand, all of a sudden, you're dealing with people in a, in a new way. These are not just bodies around a table. These are real, living, growing people that God is developing together. And you as the chair have an opportunity to allow them to grow together in this mission of developing missionaries for the master out of this school. Okay? So those are some ways to build your team. And anyway, let's hear some feedback, input, suggestions, thoughts, examples.
Well, I can say, you know, I've, I've been involved with the Garland School Board for 12 years now. And we know, everybody knows everybody, so we know each other. So our school board meetings, they can be long because sometimes we socialize a little bit too much. But there, our meetings are kind of laid back and we have our agenda. We do go through the agenda. But I think most of us, we have a common, at least we feel a common purpose and on what we would like to see GCAS become. And so we have, you know, a good working relationship with, with our teachers and our pastor. We're, we're just a single, you know, single principal teacher, so we're not big like some of you guys. So I guess the smaller group, maybe it's easier for us to work together. But I agree with everything you're saying. If, if we work good, if we have a common goal and we work well together, we, we're more productive.
Amen. Amen.
So Dan, maybe this is coming up on a future slide, but one of your previous slides talked about subcommittees. And it fits in with, you know, what you're talking about right now too, in terms of building this team and getting people more involved and knowing each other. Is that in some of the school boards in the past, there's been, if you want to call it subcommittees, you call it that. We'd never called it that. We'd, you know, have somebody that would be working on a fundraiser. But it seemed to land where about half the board, our board only usually had about eight members on it. About half the board would be involved during the year on some projects and get to know each other better. And of course, contribute more to the health of the school. And the others would just be people that come through to the board meetings, which is fine. It's good to have the input and everything. But I'm just thinking, maybe it is more functional to have more people or all the people on the board involved in working subcommittees. In fact, my principal had been talking to me, there's a new principal for this year about this very thing. So are you going to be talking more about that before we finish today?
Let's just take a minute right here. There's no strict rule on this or policy on this. But typically, the school has several aspects to it. Personnel is one, so that's often a, a subcommittee. If you have a smaller school, it's not a big deal. If you have a larger school, you, you take more time with that. And then finance is another one. You know, and then another typical one might be academics, which is really the principal and the teachers. But just to look at those extracurricular things and balance those out. And the missing one, the missing one is the mission and spiritual life subcommittee. Of all things, that's the most important thing. Okay, and so, so I would say that if you, you know, and some boards are larger, some are smaller. But it's, it's probably wise to have, to just pick three or four areas that you feel like they, you could subdivide into that would incorporate the important things. And then have everybody on the board in one of those four, one of those three, whatever, whatever you're working with. And they don't have to, you know, we don't want to be meetinged to death with busy schedules. We don't need a bunch of meetings and all the rest. But it does help that there is a simple little network. And I found when I was on a church board, I would allot 15 minutes of the board meeting to what I called huddles. And during the huddles, everybody would go into their huddle, which you might say on a school board would be a subcommittee. And, and that way you're not taking, they're not having to pull people from all over creation, you know, to get them together. Or now with Zoom, you can do it more easily and all the rest. But we allowed 15 minutes right there on the board for them to go into their huddles. And, and, and they had two, two things to talk about in their huddles. The first one was, how are you doing? Okay? Because we don't want somebody who's dying inside and we don't know about it. I mean, there, if somebody just lost a loved one and they came to the board and they're trying to do their best and, and we're wondering, well, they don't seem to be engaged in this conversation. We don't even know what's happening. So how are you doing? And then the second thing is, how are we doing on what we're trying to accomplish? So that's really what that part is about. And then we'd always ask them to pray with each other and for each other in those small huddles. So I recommend something like that. You can adapt it for your school board, whatever that might be. But letting people work together on a project is an exciting thing or an area. And the, the personnel might, you know, a lot of the personnel issues are dealt with by the Office of Education. So you don't want to be getting into their role. But what you do want to do is to make sure that your teachers are having the best opportunity to grow spiritually and to be a part of the mission of the church, area churches, and to really be bringing some fresh spiritual leadership to the class each day. You want that to be happening. And so how do we help that happen? And then the finances, of course, they review the different things. And, and you know, what you don't want in finance is nitpicky micromanagement. What you really want to do is to say, what is our income? And is it really what it needs to be? And how will we supplement it if we don't have what we need? And what are our expenses? And what are our priorities? And you can see what those priorities are by how much you pay. Okay? And of course, a whole lot of it is the staff. That's the largest chunk of any, any budget. And so then you look at what else. And so you're not saying, well, why is, why is the paper supply $10 over budget? That's not the purpose of a board or even a subcommittee. It's to, it's to look at the general directions. Do we need to cut expenses? Do we need to cut expenses? Can we increase income? And occasionally you'll have people, well-meaning people that'll say, well, if we had faith, we'd go forward even though we don't have the money. And what I do is I smile and I say, if we had faith, we'd raise the money and believe God could give us the money so we could go forward. Okay? So anyway, those are some concepts for, for subcommittees. I hope that's helpful, Lee. Is that?
Extremely helpful. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments on building your team? Or subcommittees?
Esther, Dan. I had my hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see the little, the little blue hand up in the corner now. Thank you, Lindy. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Um, so going back to relationship building, something new that we tried last month was, and I have to confess, I'm not a fan of meetings. And that was my huge hesitation in taking this position because I just do not like meetings. I can't, I can't sit still for extended times. And I do not enjoy long meetings. And so I asked the board, could we meet at a separate Zoom time and dedicate it solely to lifting up issues and prayer? And if the teachers wanted to join, they were welcome. There's several things, you know, like, you know, COVID concerns, people getting sick, staff getting sick, prevention. And, you know, our AC system is breaking and just, you know, all these things that we worry about in board meetings that come up. And so we took a separate time to pray and, and divide. You know, on Zoom is great because you can assign people different things to pray about and everybody's there collectively. And, and just go down the list. And, and I think, you know, the teacher's seeing that, yes, we meet as a board to discuss business, but we also care about how it affects you individually in your classroom and kind of bridge that gap with, well, we have these people who aren't even here on a day-to-day basis making decisions over our, you know, our building and what happens to us. So I, I think that's helpful is having that time, a separate time of prayer. You know, it was just 30 minutes on Zoom to have this prayer meeting. And then another date is our board meeting. But we can go into it knowing that all of us join together in prayer over things in the spirit of doing it for the greater good of the school and the children and our mission.
That is beautiful, beautiful. And if you do it separately, that's wonderful. If you can integrate it into the meeting itself, that's wonderful. But there needs to be some prayer time for the school, the staff, the situations. That, that needs to be there. Somebody said, when we pray, God works. When we work, God wishes we pray. So thank you. That's a beautiful testimony. Anyone else before we go to the next section? Okay, let's go to the next one. And that is, enjoy your meetings. Enjoy your board meetings. Don't just see it as a job or a responsibility. See it as an opportunity and in a calling to change the world. Okay? Enjoy your board meetings. And there are ways to make them far more enjoyable. Okay? And here are some things. Here are four things that I think need to be in every board meeting. Or you could do the prayer time separately, Lindy just mentioned, okay? There needs to be Bible vision and mission. Talk about having a devotional, and that's fine. And that's good to have a devotional. But why not have the devotional focus on what our biblical mandate and mission is? And it can be done by various people. It can be done by board members and you can rotate it around or whatever. But, or you can just pick some passages that you, that you have everybody read and then you discuss. But keep that vision and mission there. The Adventist message to all the world in this generation, we are raising disciples who will be disciple makers. We are, we want these kids to have all the experience they need when they graduate to share their faith and to share what they believe the Bible is teaching and that Jesus is coming again. In fact, at the end of every single school year, you want every kid to be able to say, I think I know Jesus better and I know what Adventists believe. And, and I think I want to be a part of that. You, that's your hope, your hoped-for outcome at the end of every year. So the Bible vision and mission you want to have as a part, just to keep that high, not dumbed down. Second, you're going to have some reports. People have been working on things. You can have reports, but it's not just business reports. You want to hear some reports of changed lives with the students. Okay? You want to hear, what evidence do we have that our kids are becoming more like Jesus and more impassioned for witness? And let teachers give a report, principal give a report, whatever, whoever's going to be giving reports. Subcommittee leaders can give reports. But you're really looking about not just the hardcore data, you're looking about the transformed lives as well. So you get reports. These reports do not need to be long. Okay? I say a two-minute report is more memorable than a 20-minute report. Okay? So keep them short and sweet and focused. And then recommendations. Recommendations is a wonderful thing. Now, I know on a school board, this may sound a little scary. You have to decide as a chair if you want to do this or not. But I'm just going to give you an example of what we did in Richardson in the church board. When I passed her there at Richardson, we had people, by the time I left, God gave us a rapid growth and I praise the Lord for that. We went from 600 to 970 and we helped plant a few churches along the way. And, and it was all about getting people connected and in groups and ministry and mission and serving. But on our board meetings, we would try to keep it to one and a half hours. And we would have biblical vision, mission. When we had reports, we'd say, anybody have a one or two-minute report? And somebody would say, I have agreed to mentor these people in starting a soccer ministry on this field 15 miles from here. Somebody else would say, I agree to mentor these people who, these members who are going into the public school over here 10 miles away after school to teach the parents and the kids how to be healthier in the inner city. And so it allowed for reports that were exciting of God doing some things. And when it came time for recommendations, oh, we, of course, we'd always have our clerks' report and our treasurer's report. And on the school, you'll always have, you should always have the enrollment report and the financial report. And the basic financial report is, are we ahead or behind and by how much? Okay? So you don't need to have 15 pages of documents unless people, a person wants them. You, what you really want to do is, here's the income, here's the expense, here's where we're at, here's what we need to do about it. And do we need to set up a team to really work on bringing this back into order? But then recommendations at the church, we'd say, does anybody have a recommendation? You know, in church boards, probably more than school boards, but it can happen in school boards too. There are always some who feel like, I'm on the board. It's my job to bring a problem to the board and dump it on the table and then let everybody talk about it on and on and on and on and on. That is not the job of the board. Okay? The job of the board is to hear recommendations and to vote them up or vote them down or to table them for more study. Okay? And so those recommendations can, can come from a lot of different places. So I'll just give you an example on a church board and, and you can apply it to the school board if you like. And that is, we had a new member of the board who did not understand how recommendations work. And I said at the board meeting one night, does anybody have a recommendation? Any recommendations? And this new board member said, we have a problem. The kids hang out in the fellowship hall during second service and they are in there without adults and they shouldn't be in there. And when I told them to get into the service, they, they told me their parents were there in first service and they were there in first service and they don't want to go into second service again. And so I said, what's your recommendation? He says, well, I don't know. That's why I brought it here. And I said, well, why don't you get together with a few people and come up with a recommendation for next month? And he says, but what about between now and then? And I said, well, it might solve itself. Or you might figure out a way to deal with it. But we, we don't have time to work with things unless there are recommendations here. And he was very frustrated. And the next month, he came back and he told me on the side, it's solved. Now, can you imagine wasting the entire board's time talking about kids these days and parents and supervision and on and on and on and on and on and on? And, and people hate their meeting, their board meeting. They do not want to go to a board meeting like that. So we said, recommendations. Reports are generally one to two minutes long. Recommendations are at most three to five minutes long. If you can't state it in three to five minutes, it's not really been thought through. And then we can vote it up or down or table it and, and ask for more help or get something on that. So that helped us simplify so many things. And people loved board meetings better when we did that. And then we had prayer time. And you can, you can have a lot of different ways of prayer time. But those of you who have been in a board that I've led know how we close the board meetings. And some people hate it, but most people love it, so I keep doing it. We call it a sentence prayer or a circle prayer and a, which stands for group hug. And I know it's COVID, so you can't do this the same way. And, but we would form a circle. We would join hands. This is the last agenda item. We form a circle, we join hands. And I'd say, I want each person to just pray one sentence of whatever's on your heart to the Lord. And we'd go completely around the circle until everybody had said one sentence. Some people had never even talked that night, but now they had a chance to talk to the Lord. Other people had probably talked a little too much that night. And they had one sentence. But everybody shared to the Lord what was on their heart. And when it came to the end and I'd have my final sentence, then we'd say amen. And we'd all take two steps in, we'd put our arms around each other. And on the count of three, we'd go one, two, three, grug for group hug. And then we would say, when you have the Lord and you have each other, what else do you need? And it just seemed like even though we had to deal with some very difficult issues sometimes, that if we ended that way, we went out talking with each other, loving each other and praying for each other instead of talking about each other and praying upon each other. So enjoy your meetings. And let me just see here. I wrote a, I wrote a, an article that was published in Ministry Magazine a couple of years ago called Want Better Church Board Meetings?, question mark. And you can find it on the website, ministrymagazine.org. And I know that school board meetings and church board meetings aren't, aren't identical and all the rest. But the mission is the same. And I think if you look through that article, you'll get some ideas that you'll say, we could do that or we could navigate toward that or we could adapt this for our situation. So I just want you to know that that's available right there on enjoying your meetings. Okay? All right. What do you want to say about this?
I'll say something. Again, as a person who does not enjoy long meetings, all of this spoke to my heart. And I really, I, I thank you so much for reframing how the meeting can run and what the purpose is. Because I've seen too many times where a recommendation's being made, which leads to a concern, which leads to a discussion that completely dismantles the recommendation and nothing's accomplished. And it's been a long discussion of 20 to 25 to 30 minutes. And so I appreciate this because I'm going to come back to the board and kind of remind and reframe everyone how we're going to move forward. And I like what you said about if you bring a recommendation and it, you know, maybe tabling it and you meet aside with two or three other people and discuss it and come back at the next meeting with some sort of recommendation we can vote on. So that's much appreciated.
Praise the Lord. Let's save time for God's work. Other observations? Or questions or comments or stories?
It has been my observation that a lot of times on boards and subcommittees, we keep repeating ourselves because we haven't convinced everybody of our point yet. And there comes a point in time and I found this to be a useful thing is to, for, as the school board chair, to restate what they stated and said, thank you. Now, we do understand what you said, but there's people that don't agree with. And, and move it. Sometimes you can move to the vote just simply by acknowledging the person that you have been heard. And, you know, we will move to the vote. Yeah. Because I, I think, I think our conviction is that people just don't understand us and our brilliant ideas. And so we just have to repeat them over and over again. I've tried that with my children.
I was, I was on a committee recently. And two people kept talking again and again and again and again and again against what was being proposed. And I wasn't the chair, but I, I finally said, I'd love to hear from some of the others on this committee, what they would like to say about this. And three other people spoke. And then the chair said, now, do we, are we ready for vote? And they said, yes. And the vote was 35 for the proposal and two against. I'm not going to tell you who the two were. But it's true. There are some who will dominate, dominate, dominate. And so what we want to do is to say, we want to, we want to hear your, your perspective. And like you said, Marlene, very good to, to restate it to make sure that we all have heard. Some people talk because they, nobody listens to them. Their spouse doesn't listen to them. So they go to a board meeting and have to talk and try to catch up or having somebody listen to them. So, so, you know, it's just, it's important to restate. And then let's hear from some of who haven't spoken up yet. You know, and, and guide it that way. Okay? Other comments, observations? So I will add just a couple of other things that I want to mention too. As you grow in your leadership of leading boards, there are some tools that you may already have in your toolbox or you want to add to your toolbox. You know, your toolbox, we all need the Holy Spirit to guide us. But it's part of our character development to add tools to our toolbox. So that somebody said, if, if the only tool in your toolbox is a hammer, you think every problem is a nail. And you're just going to be hammering it. But when you have more tools to draw from, the Holy Spirit can guide you to the right tool. Here are some tools for your board leadership toolbox. Number one, the secret ballot. The secret ballot. This is for very sensitive issues. Or if there is a bully on the board. Sometimes a board has a bully on there. And they say, well, I don't think we need a secret ballot. They're the first ones who will always tell you, you never need a secret ballot. The bully will say that. Okay? And so you just smile and you say, well, I think it's better. You're the board chair. So you say, I think it's better this time if we have a secret ballot. Well, why do we need to say, I think it's better this time if we have a secret ballot? And as chair, I'm going to call for what? So, so then the secret ballot for sensitive issues and/or if there's a bully on the board. And you don't have to take long. Not everything has to be a secret ballot. And you don't have to take long. Not everything has to be a secret ballot issue. But secret ballots are an amazing thing, especially when there are bullies there. I have seen on boards where we took a secret ballot vote. One time we had a very sensitive issue and a, and a business meeting, and we had about 70 people there. And everybody was saying, "Oh, we can't do this. We can't do that. We can't do this." And, and I said, "Well, let's, let's pray about it and then let's vote our conscience by secret ballot." And it came out like 69 to one. And everybody thought they would look bad to a few people there if they voted one way. But when they could vote by secret ballot, everybody knew what direction we're supposed to go. So, so sometimes that can help. That's a tool in the toolbox you need to pull out sometimes. Another tool is the straw poll. The straw poll. It's a non-binding poll. And if you're just, the purpose of this is to see if your team is clearly leaning one way or another, so you don't need to discuss things more and more and more. Okay? You're just saying, this is, you're just saying, you know, "I'm, I'm hearing a lot of discussion, and I, and before we take an official vote, I just want to do a straw poll vote. And I want to see if we kind of are sensing what direction we go." If we were to vote on this, how many of you are feeling more comfortable if we go this way? Would you raise your hands? And if you see practically everybody raise their hand, then the one who's been talking the other way begins realizing this is not going anywhere. And so then you can say, "Well, it looks like we can go ahead and begin taking our official vote now." All, do we have a motion? Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, then it's carried. And that will help save you a lot of wasted time on your board. Another tool is a prayer break for wisdom on decisions and recommendations. If there's been a little bit of heated discussion and all the rest, you can say, "You know, we're going to need to make a decision or to either postpone or to make a decision here. But let's take a prayer break. And I'm going to ask if we have three volunteers for prayer. Or let's just pray silently here for a couple of minutes. But take a prayer break so that we can have our minds cleared and let the things cool off a little bit, and then we have more clarity in moving forward." And then another tool in your toolbox can be a new school year orientation. You can put a block of time in your school board agenda, maybe a 20-minute block of time or whatever, 30-minute block of time, where the whole purpose is an orientation for the new year. And you're getting to know each other and you have little activities where they're pairing off and meeting each other and then introducing the person they just met to another person. And, you know, just these interactive type of things. And then where the, the head teacher, the principal gives them a little tour of the school. But you can block off some time for special things like that, where you have a new, new school year orientation and trying to make sure you're on the same page with the mission and the purpose and the direction. And you can also set up, another tool can be setting blocks of time for things such as goal setting, dreaming about how can we reach this city and the kids in it that ought to be in our school. Dreaming about, taking time for huddles. I talked earlier about huddles and having, you know, them getting in small groups to brainstorm some ideas. Scheduling the calendar. You can set aside a block of time to go through the, the school year calendar and then give them a quiz on it so that they're, they're kind of, they're on top of things and they're aware of when the, how the school year is flowing and, and the key points in that calendar. And, and on the budget, block off some time. And you don't have to agree on every detail, but look at the major things and say, "Are they in balance? Does this really reflect our mission and our purpose and how we're trying to carry it forward?" So those are some tools you can add to your toolbox. You may already have some in there. You may have others you could add. But any thoughts on this before we go to the next part?
I do have a question. How do you do a secret ballot on Zoom?
That is a, that's a tricky thing. What you do is you say, "Everybody, go down to the bottom where it says reaction, and if you're for it, put, do this, but everybody, close your eyes." No, that doesn't work so well.
We did.
You can do an anonymous poll. You can do a poll and not give the name, like, so you can do a poll question, but not track who submitted the, the response. You know what I mean?
Thank you, Lisa. There's on administrative for a Zoom meeting, if you hover over the bottom screen, you will see polling. Okay? And so you could set up a poll and you can set up the wording in advance, or you can just set up a yes/no poll. And, 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 you know, you have to become familiar with it, but that, that would be the way. Thank you, Lisa, for, Lisa for reminding me of that.
One other function is on the chat. You can select private instead of public. And you could have them just do it private to you. And that way you are the only one that would see the results.
Yes, yes. And that calls for integrity if you don't believe they're voting right. No, but really, you can do it that way as well. You can have the chat, and if you click on the chat, which everybody has, you see down there where it's just above where you can type your message here, it says, "Everyone." But then if you click on it, it'll allow you to pick who you're sending that message to for everybody that's on the line. So that, that's another good way.
Dan?
Yes.
Do we, do we follow Robert's Rules of Order specifically?
Not in the Adventist Church. Robert's Rules of Orders have some good things. It has some good guidance. But there, the reality is, is that there are people in our church who are, who have, who have memorized every way to get around what the body wants to do, and they use it to their advantage. Okay? And in the church, we have to be very conscientious that we're hearing from those who aren't speaking up and we're allowing for those who don't know all of the different ways of maneuvering to still be heard and to have the body be making the decision. Robert's Rules of Orders, I wouldn't throw it out. Robert's Rules of Order, I wouldn't throw it out. But as a church, we have taken the position generally through the years that it can inform us in good parliamentary procedures, but that it is not the final word.
So if I may, in, during our constituency meetings, we'll tend to have a marshal or a parliamentary marshal. Often it's been one of our local attorneys, whatever. What is he comparing our behavior to?
Generally, yeah. Generally, it will be, you know, at one time, and I don't know, I'd have to go back and see this, but a, a number of years ago, I remember there was an Adventist adaptation for Robert's Rules of Orders. Robert's Rules of Order. And, and I don't know if they still use that or if they, but there are certain things, you know, and, and where you, you can't jump on and try to, but it's, the purpose of Robert's Rules of Order is to facilitate the collective wisdom and come out with a decision there. When we have a constituency, the parliamentarian can, will be going either there or typically, more typically to the policy book with the Adventist Church and see if there's, if, if we're acting in harmony with our conference constitution and with the policies of the North American Division. So I wouldn't throw it all out, but don't let those who are experts in it hijack the will of the body.
I, I asked this specifically because, as I understand it in Robert's Rules of Order, to, unless your constitution defines a, a ballot for voting, you would want to secure a vote to approve the use of ballot for any particular action, rather than the chair having autonomy to choose that. So just procedurally, that may be a requirement. I don't know.
Yes. And that is where, as a chair in a school or a church board, you do, in Advent, in Adventist governments, you do have the authority to call for a secret ballot vote. And if it looked like it was going to be, and, and I'll tell you, it's, it's a little more complicated with Zoom. But whenever I had to call for a secret ballot vote, I would always make sure two other people who weren't speaking strongly either way would count the thing together and report it to me, rather than me be the one, because you want to have the greatest transparency you can possibly have.
And most of our boards have, we have a secretary who quite often is our school principal and might make a good second person to review that anyway, right?
Right, yes. And, and you see, we, we, that's why we talked about conversion and character right out, right out the first. We cannot, as board chair, try to, to manipulate what the body is deciding. We're there to allow for the decisions, but we have to go, go forward and, and, and help with that guidance. Now I see that somebody, okay, Kristy, you're giving some input. Yes, speak up, Kristy. All right, we read it right here. Here we go.
I was just kind of messing around on the ministry site and couldn't find your article. And I was kind of curious about reading that. And also, if you could find that Adventist adaptation of Robert's Rules of Order, maybe it's something that these links could be sent out to us in that group email we have going on later.
Yes. Now you're giving me homework.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to put, I'm going to write that down.
I found that if you, I just Googled Adventist adaptation of Robert's Rules of Order. The first link that showed up is from slcadventist.org. I don't know what slcadventist.org is, but it says it's the General Conference Corporation of Seventh-day Adventists, Robert's Rules of Order, so.
There you go. Hey, Doug, could you, could you copy that link and paste it into our chat?
Yep, I will be glad to do that.
Thank you for doing my homework for me.
That'll be 50 cents.
I had a friend that used to say, "I'd rather owe it to you all of my life than cheat you out of it." All right. Hey, so we're heading down. I said it would be about an hour and a half and it's, we're heading down for a two-hour meeting. But hopefully, we're enjoying our meeting. Okay? That's what I believe in. There, there are times when it's tough and painful in a board, but in general, you want people to leave saying, "God showed up. God gave us wisdom. God guided us forward." Rather than say, "That person talks too much," or "I didn't believe in the way that should have gone." Okay? That's what you really want to have, that, that mentality. Okay, so let's go to the next one. And that is, "Check Your Resources." Let's just put that up there. All right. Check your resources. We do have resources. And people resources are the best, and we just gave an evidence of that. Because Doug mentioned something. I fumbled around trying to answer it. Others mentioned it. Kristy gave me an assignment, but Doug Googled it and found it, and then we did it. That is teamwork. That's teamwork. Teamwork makes the dream work. Okay? All right. Now, people resources. Talk to people. Listen to people. Realize that God on your board has collected people with various spiritual gifts that we can tap into to move His work forward. Okay? Then there are training resources that can be very helpful as well. And print resources and online resources. So I'm just going to look at, I'm going to share a couple of those with you. Well, I've already mentioned about the, the article on Want Better Church Board Meetings and how you might adapt that. Then the School Board Manual for School Boards of Seventh-day Adventist Schools. You know, that link is online, and I think you already sent it by the education office. And they give you a lot of nitty-gritty things that I don't need to take time for here. But if I were chairing a school board, I'll tell you one of the things I would do. I would make sure everybody in this board had the link to the manual. And I would block off 20 minutes on a school board meeting. And I would assign out every board member to have one, to team up with one other person and have one or two sections of that school board manual to learn. And I'd tell them at our next board meeting, you and your, the two of you are going to have two minutes or three minutes to tell us the most important thing from that section that you learned that you think our board could benefit from. Okay? And then we get together and these two would say, "Well, we were talking. We found this and we did this and this." And we would have a timekeeper and we'd just keep it fun. So when the buzzer went off, we'd say, "Oh, thank you. You gave us the most important things." Next two people, you had the next section. What did you learn from this school board manual? And I would let them share and then let them share. So we all know, if you give out a manual like this for, in nine times out of 10, it's going to sit on a shelf and only one or two people are going to ever read it. And you're going to read it and you're going to kind of get lost in the woods on it. But if you have fun with it, by assigning out a couple or three people, this section, a couple of three, and you come together in 20 minutes flat, you can get the most important things for your board from the board members and everybody learns from each other, and then you move on. Okay? So that's another resource that is available there. Let's see. And then here's another one. The North American Division saw that we were having more and more and more trainees with their different departments and different conferences and unions. And they said, "Let's have one website for all of these training functions where you can actually get a training, do a quiz, and print out your own certificate, showing that you finished that training." And two specific trainings that are online, I believe they're one hour each, if I recall correctly. I went through them a while back. They're just one hour each. Adventist K-12 School Board Chair Leadership Training. That is for you as the chairperson. And then the second one is Adventist K-12 School Board Membership Training. So the first one-hour training or so is for you as chair. And the second is for you, your board members, for all board members. Now, I'm, I'm going to share something with you. If we're really going to make disciples and grow God's work, every leader needs to be developing other leaders. So I would ask the chair, the vice chairs of my subcommittees. Well, if you have four subcommittees, I would ask those vice chairs to take that chair, that school board chair leadership training, too. And then I'd say, "Let's get together afterwards and have a 15, 20-minute discussion on what are the highlights you got from that training and share together." So you are mentoring your vice chairs for the day you retire or move or whatever, and you're developing, or when a new school starts, we have more trained leaders. You see that piece? Does that make sense? And then with the members, I would, I would, once again, I would say, "I want everybody to go through this, and then we're going to come together and we're going to block off a little time in the board. And I want to have us talk about the things we learned from that training." Okay, so, so check your resources and, and see what you have that are available there. And, and that can help a lot. Okay, any comments on checking your resources or those things there? Any comments, suggestions, questions?
How has this been a secret for me for so long?
I don't.
Have you conspired against?
I wasn't asked to do this training earlier. I'm sorry. But you know, really, I didn't know it when I was at Richardson, or I would have mentioned it. And I think they've only put it out there in the last few years. I'm not sure how many years it's been out there. But there is, there, that Adventist Learning Community has stuff on every part of church life and school life and all the rest of it. So there's, some, some of them are better. Some of them are a little, you know, nod off and all the rest. But these two are specific for what we're talking about. And so I see value in them. But the best value is not to just tell, tell everybody, "Watch it, watch it, watch it." But have a time for the feedback loop to really come in. When you get the feedback loop, everybody learns. All right, anything else? We're heading to the seventh and last one. Okay, here we go. Okay, here we go. And Doug, thank you for sharing that link there, I see. Okay, here is the last one I have for you. "Celebrate your successes." All right, when I was in youth ministry, many years ago, when I was in youth ministry, I heard one idea in one seminar that completely changed my mentality in one area of youth ministry. They said, "There are great things happening in the lives of your young people, and if you don't find out and celebrate them, they will feel like they don't really belong in your youth group and your church." They said, "For example, do you know when the last three kids in your youth group got their driver's license?" And I realized I didn't have a clue, okay? And yet, what is the biggest milestone that a 16-year-old typically has in their whole world? When they get their driver's license, that's a huge milestone. So in youth groups, we begin celebrating the driver's license and celebrating the successes. And in a, in our school, why not on the board, celebrate your successes? And those can be those little one-minute reports. It doesn't have to take long, or it may be a little bit bigger celebration at time. But the greatest success you have is changed lives. That can be changed lives of students, of teachers, of board members, of family members. But talk about how God is transforming lives, and the more we talk about it, the more our lives are transformed, and more people's lives are transformed. Celebrate milestones in the school. You know, the completion of a building. We always have a, a building, what do you call it? Like a grand opening or whatever of a new facility. Well, why not do that with, and then we do it for graduation, where we celebrate the graduation. But why not celebrate when our kids have each learned to share their testimony about Jesus and what He means to them? Why not celebrate when our kids are baptized in their local churches and find a way to make sure that that's a big thing at the school as well? What about when those kids go out on outreach? A lot of our schools don't really have a plan for taking the students in outreach. And I know it's complicated with transportation and scheduling and all the rest of it. When they go and visit somebody in need, when they go and do some type of outreach, it changes their world, and you want to have, you want to show at least some little video clip of it happening. I'll, I'll tell you one thing I'm celebrating about, is that yesterday, my son, who is planting churches in Fort Worth area, baptized his former hairstylist. And the first time his hairstylist learned about the Adventist Church was when she was cutting his hair, and he, and he, they got in a conversation about Jesus and about the Bible, and it led from one thing to another. And yesterday, she was baptized, but the church he's planting rents from a Sunday church that doesn't have a baptistry. So one of the church members got their pickup truck and put a tarp in the back and filled up the truck bed with water on Friday night, and then on Sabbath morning, drove it around to the side, the front of the building, because it was in the side of the building there by the water faucet, and made sure that they had enough water in it, drove it around, and so he baptized her. And I said, "That is the reason we have pickup trucks in Texas."
I saw that on Facebook.
That was our, that was his former hairdresser. And I say "former" because she was fired from her job for, for not working on Sabbath. But what a testimony, what a testimony of her faithfulness. When somebody's fired from their job because of not working on Sabbath, that is a time to celebrate, because heaven is celebrating. But it's not a time to say, "Oh, that's so terrible." It's a time to say, "Praise the Lord for your faithfulness. Let's see what God has for you next." So celebrate those baptisms. And that leads me to this one concluding thing in this segment, and really, we're drawing it to an end. And that is, I believe every one of our schools ought to have a baptismal class or group this fall. And we need to find a way to do it. And it may be that the teacher can, or the teacher might throw up their hands and say, "I'm overwhelmed with everything I have to do." And it could be that a pastor could. But if, if nobody's taking the initiative, then you as the church board chair, or school board chair, could say to one of the pastors or the teachers or whatever, "What can we do to have a baptismal class for our students? What could we do?" And just let them brainstorm it a little bit, pray about it, come back the next meeting with some recommendations, and see what can happen. When I was pastoring in Kansas City, I had a mother come to me, and she said, "Pastor, my son is going to the Adventist School, and he is, he wants to be baptized." And I said, "Great. What about some of his friends?" And she said, "Well, I don't know." And so I said, "Well, let's check it out." I went to the school, and I talked to her son, and I said, "Do you have any friends that might want to be baptized too?" And he says, "Well, I'll talk to them." And I said, "Do you have any academy students that you really look up to?" And he says, "Yeah." And I said, "Well, who?" And he began telling me the names of the basketball players. They were the heroes on the court, but I wanted them to be the heroes in the eyes of heaven. And so I wrote down the names of four guys on the basketball team that he looked up to. They, they didn't know who he was. He's a fifth-grade kid, you know? He's one in the audience watching him. And so I went to them, and I said, "Do you know this kid?" "No, not really." "He wants to be baptized," and I asked him who he looks up to, and he said, "You." "Who, me? Me?" And I said, "Yeah." "So I want you to help me with a baptismal class to prepare him and his friends for baptism." "Me?" And I said, "Yeah." It's the last 30 minutes every Tuesday and Thursday for six weeks, 12 sessions. Every Tuesday and Thursday. All those guys, yes, and I was saying, "Hallelujah, Lord." I had two of them lead the group on Tuesdays, and the other two on Thursdays, even though they were in there. And when that kid, when, when the school found out that the basketball stars were leading the baptismal class, we had a group of 20 kids that came in, and 11 of them were preparing for baptism, and the other nine said, "Can we come in to support our friends who are gonna be baptized?" Well, that's a whole different dynamic than being pulled out away from your friends to go study with some pastor somewhere to get ready for baptism. And that was, and the 11 that were baptized were baptized in a number of churches. I baptized a few in my church, but every church was blessed by that. And we can do that. We can do these things. And as a school board, we can make sure that these things rise to the top of the priority list, that they're not just kind of shoved aside in what we're doing. But these are the missional things that we are watching, and when they happen, we raise our hands and say, "Hallelujah," or we, we click the reaction button with a thumbs up, or with a clapping hand, if you want to do with a clapping hand. So anyway, that's the last part. What final comments do you all have before we close this?
Thank you so much, Dan.
I got, I got four pages of notes. Thank you. Thank you.
I have about three myself. Thanks, Dan.
That's the, it is something that you do, and if you've done it for more than two or three years, it can become stale.
Yes.
And I think this was a beautiful experience. I hope we do it. I would love to get together with everybody, but boy, this made it so much more doable than trying to get down to Austin. And I, I think if we did it yearly at this format, and then every so often, maybe in an in-person format, it could keep us somehow motivated. It's, it's not, it's not routine to feel appreciated necessarily as a school board chair. And I, I think it just, it's been wonderful. And to see all these, all you other school board chairs, and to know that we're, our, our goal in our ministry is all for the Lord and for His glory. And, you know, I, I would appreciate and covet your prayers for our ministry here, and I will be more conscientious in, in, and in fact, I thought, I want to get a list of all the school board chairs in the conference, so that I can pray with them by name. It'd be fun. It's, it's nice to know there's other people out there too. So I, I feel like I have a new, a new group.
Amen, amen.
I, I would like to say, from our perspective, you know, like I said, we're a small school, and having listened to you guys all who have larger schools, because our thought process is to, to stay within 30, you know, 30, 35 kids. Because we feel like, with NDAA in the area, we feel like we're just there to, well, we're there to service a community that can't necessarily afford NDAA at the very beginning. What we try to do is, is we cater pre-K to six, and then with the hopes that, you know, we always tell them, "Okay, you're gonna come to GCAS, and then you're gonna go to NDAA." So we feel like we are a feeder into NDAA, and we're not looking to, to be big. You know, that's not our goal. We're looking to, you know, service that, that community of people who can't necessarily afford NDAA at the beginning, in the hopes that, you know, they'll buy into Christian education, and then when it's time for them to go over to NDAA, they're well-prepared. So the partnership that we look at, I mean, I've never spoken to Marlene about that necessarily, but just to let her know, that's how we think at Garland. We're not compared to NDAA. We are kind of a jumping board or springboard into NDAA. That's how we kind of look at ourselves.
You know, when you look back at when Adventism or Adventist Education was established, Mrs. White encouraged every small church, if you had even a little handful of students, to get a teacher. I think, I don't know why the number eight stands out in my mind, but just, but I, I would love to see every one of our denominational churches, if they couldn't have an academy, that they at least have the beginning of elementary, whatever. And I, I think that it keeps you more tied into your church family at elementary and kindergarten level, which I think is significant, and at upper grades. You know, when a larger community or a greater, greater community of friends seems to be what kids want, then it's, the bigger schools become significant for the children.
If I could offer something that might be encouraging to all of us in these COVID days, Chisholm Trail Academy's enrollment is about, is a little bit more than 110% above what was last year. Growth is just fantastic, a little bit, well, we know it's, we know it's God blessing. We have a brand-new principle. But, and our seniors just finished their senior retreat, started Wednesday. They came back home last night, and it was quite an event for them. So we're just, we're, Adventist Education is still important, and it's still thriving. And those of you that run, you know, small schools, you're very important in your areas. And so we're praying for each of you.
Amen. Well, friends, I said about an hour and a half, but this has been fun. And I hopefully, I think you found it to be useful. In, in closing, I'm gonna ask each of you to say a sentence prayer. We can't do the group hug, but to say a sentence prayer. And several of you have touched on some things, and I, I think I ought to add this just before that prayer. You can encourage each other, pray for each other, and, and help each other. If I can ever be of help, I'm at the conference office. You can call, text, email me, whatever. And it's really the same. I know some people see evangelism and education as being in conflict with each other, but when we understand the mission, that's not it at all. We have the same mission. There, there are different tracks, but we can work very closely together. And when that happens, it's for God's honor and glory. And, and then one other thing is, we have lots of churches that have lots of kids that are not in Adventist education, and particularly our Spanish kids. And those, many of them have church buildings that could be, have a small school in it, if we were able to find some ways to accomplish that. And those small schools would get the kids and families used to Adventist education and be feeder schools and grow our larger schools. And so we really, you know, look beyond your school at some point in time, and just think of all those little churches out there, and not just trying to get them all to where we're at. But what would happen if we had three or four or five elementary or K-4 feeder schools into other schools, and then had several junior high schools feeding into the academy, et cetera? It would strengthen our whole system. So God, God will help us to find ways forward. And we have to think new thoughts and ask Him to give us wisdom beyond our own. So I know it's a little tricky to try to pray on Zoom, because you never know who's gonna go next. So I'm gonna give you the rundown. So listen to who comes before you and pray after them, okay? And I'm just gonna go right down my list that shows up, because it keeps changing here. Josh will go first, and after Josh will be Lee, and after Lee will be Doug, and after Doug will be Kristy, and after Kristy will be Lindy, and after Lindy will be Leisha, and after Leisha will be Malcolm, and after Malcolm will be Marlene, and after Marlene will be Trent, and after Trent, all closed, okay? Let's go for it. Josh?
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for being in the midst of this wonderful training that Pastor Dan has put together for us, Lord. We just thank you for all the interaction between these school board chairs, Lord, and feeling free to share different experiences and help build this community of school board chairs, Lord, that are seeking to continue to go forward in their work that you've called them to do. And just bring all honor and glory to you, Lord, with, with what we do and how we interact with one another. Lord, I just thank you for being a part in leading and guiding this meeting, Lord, in Jesus' name, pray.
Thank you, Heavenly Father, for your power, for the wisdom of your teachings, for what Dan has brought to us today. Multiply it many times over through the power of your Holy Spirit.
Lord, we ask you to be particularly close to our administrators, to our teachers, and with each student, that they will grow in love with you, for you.
And Heavenly Father, we not only want to focus on the kids we have in our own schools, but also whenever their time with us is done, that wherever they go and whatever they choose to continue their education, and that you just continue to guide them and bless the people that you put into their lives.
Lord, we pray that you also give us hearts that are converted daily and that are surrendered to you, so that we can have your Spirit within us as we lead these schools. We pray for wisdom and patience with the other board members, patience with our community, our congregation, and give us diplomacy and give us a love for others, even when times can get challenging. We pray for your continued protection, in Jesus' name.
Lord, we pray for all the families who have chosen to put their children in Adventist education, Lord. We pray for those families that their needs may be met. We pray for all the school, school board members, and for the teachers and the staff members that arm our schools on a daily basis. Thank you, Lord, for the ministry of education. We're so grateful, Lord, to be a part of that. We thank you, and it is a privilege to serve you in this area, in Jesus' name.
Heavenly Father, thank you for all the opportunity that you're giving us to help spread your wonderful message amongst the children of our, of our church and, and the general community. Help us to remember that that's our focus, that no matter how many things come along that distract us, disease and fear, that we keep focused on that message, and we pray.
Heavenly Father, I want to praise you for your promises, that you promised, "I will never leave you nor forsake you." And that if we lack wisdom, we just need to ask. And you've promised that when we are weak, you are strong. And so we claim these promises.
that when we are weak, you are strong. And so we claim these promises for your ministry of our schools and churches and commit our hearts anew to you today. Amen.
Dear Lord, thank you again for these schools and these children that you have given us. Please help us to follow your will, to do your will. Thank you again for all that you have done, that will be done in Jesus' name. Amen.
And Lord, thank you that you are our Savior, our Lord, our soon-coming King. Thank you that you've given us a mission that is bigger than us, so that we learn to depend on you. Thank you for each person in this group and our time together, and I pray that you will be the ever-present helper as they carry out this aspect of ministry and their daily lives, in Jesus' name. Amen. Friends, there's one last thing. We've got to celebrate this. So if you can, put on your screen, and then you smile big and you put your thumbs up, I'm going to do a screenshot, and it's going to go out on social media. Okay? So, let's see, can we get Leisha and Trent to see their faces, or is that not a possibility? Hey, there's Trent.
There he is.
Ready yet? One. Not quite yet. There we go. Hey, great, great, great. Okay, two thumbs up on the count of three. One, two, three. Oh, good. God bless you. That's as close as we can get to a grog under COVID. Go for it. God bless.
Thanks, Dad.